As well, but we just ask council to keep our discussions focused and at a higher level tonight as we introduce some of these topics. So our first item is citizens comments.
Randy Bell.
I thought it was late.
Is that mic on?
I'm sure it's on.
Should I tap on them?
You're not on either.
Hello? Testing? Testing again? I can be loud. All right. Randy Bell, 2241st Avenue. So I wanted to take an opportunity to provide some continuity between councils as council cycle because I sat up there on May 22nd, 2018, when we had the presentation from the hotel on what they were building and what the expectations of the community should be. So I want to go to that meeting and use this to thread together where we're at today compared to what we were told. So Frank Fredericks, then managing director, and Dan Batista, the executive VP, presented the council in front of the certificate of occupancy. Number one, outdoor wedding ceremonies only with music indoors. Ceremonies only. There will be no music. All the festivity activities were to be held indoors. And will quote-quote certainly abide by all Wild Dunes and IOP noise ordinances. So I, on this printout, I'm going to hand to council. This is very hard to find in the videos for the city because we do a great job of burying those. No offense, they're really hard to find. But I think people should listen to that and understand where we're at today when we look at what's going on with the hotel. The employee count, 40 to 50 employees is what council was told, except for summer, when we'll have some seasonal employees. But no worries, we have 150 hotel rooms, but 137 parking places to accommodate both the guests and the employees, and we'll have to make other arrangements. Well, those other arrangements are now on Palm Boulevard down to 57th. Anybody can go there every day and see the employees lined along Palm Boulevard taking up beach parking, right? It's destination wedding event, right? So destination weddings, per Frank Fredericks, do not require lots of cars because people don't actually drive to these destination weddings. They, they take alternate transportation. So I've just walked through that. I would encourage everybody to listen to what was presented. There's nothing legally binding about what was presented to the community. It's just what was told to the community as a hotel was built in the middle of a private residential development now called the PDD. The hotel was full knowledge of existing ordinances. And claiming credit for removal or moving speakers today is ludicrous in light of what was told to everybody that there was not to be outdoor noise. And since then, we've also witnessed the bulldozing of tennis courts to accommodate parking that was never planned for. So the question should be asked, why is any residential community within IOP being asked to conform to commercial noise standards instead of asking the commercial entity to conform to residential standards? Instead, the proposed ordinance would impose a near industrial 75 decibels or 70 on all of Wild Dunes. Jan Anderson's comment that starting high makes sense is laughable. I mean, that is, that is not an answer to start high and then lower to some other standard. It doesn't make any sense. You wouldn't do it with a speed limit. You certainly wouldn't do it with a noise ordinance.
Mr. Bell, I need you to wrap your comments up, please.
All right, well, I will do that. So the bottom line with the history as guide, Wild Dunes Low does not have credibility in delivering on their promises. There were comments, citizen comments made at the beginning of that meeting by a young lady, and I would ask everyone to listen. She hit the nail on the head. She said, "This home is my life. It's residential. It may not mean something to other people, but it means my world to me." And on that, I think everybody should be looking for conformity within the livability standards that are equal for everybody on this island and not singled out because someone chose to build a hotel in the middle of a residential community. Thank you.
Tony Santiago.
I'm asking council to reconsider moving forward on this ordinance. I think there are some major issues here that are discriminatory towards residents within this community. It's important to note that in Wild Dunes, over 90% of the units there are residential. That is a fact. There is 2,000-plus residential property owners in that community. There is one commercial property owner, Kenneth Dart. Okay? You're asking 2,000-plus property owners to adhere to a commercial-level zoning ordinance on noise level. For what? So that the resort can have what they want? You'd better open your eyes, though. This is really a Pandora's box. Think of it as a Trojan horse coming in. The minute you standardize Wild Dunes as a commercial unit, which is what you're doing, it will then open it up to the argument that some have had earlier, like Councilman Han and others, to where everything should be treated the same. STR, you remember that proposal? We're different. It should be the same. No STR limitations there. We'll just do it outside the gate. I've said it to you before, everything that happens inside the gate impacts all of you outside the gate. There's just no way around it. I wish it wasn't true. We still have one road coming in and out. We all know reaching goes more in than out, so they're not running through Sullivan's Island. Nobody wants a counter there. I'll keep making that point, okay? We need a counter there, traffic going both ways. We need a counter on 41st because it's going to blow up. Well, they will take care of parking. They're going to take the old sewage plant and create a parking facility so more cars can come in and out through Wild Dunes here, through IOP and through the connector. This is not a great idea. It will not be supported by about a third of your voting residents, and it certainly is unfair and immoral to push a commercially leveled zoned noise ordinance on residential communities. And it will expedite STR conversions in that community, which will expedite traffic, everything else that we've talked about. It will just open up that door. Reconsider this, come back and rethink it through. Don't try to push it through the first reading. Those of you who want to vote on a first reading, as usual, will remember, but I think it's just a wrong idea at the wrong time. Sometimes no action's better than some action, and this is a case I think we have right now. Thank you.
Terry Hack. Terry Hack.
Thank you. My name is Terry Hack, and as of last week, I reside at Wild Dunes Resort until I find a permanent home. As I drove here today, I thought, "I'm coming home." And I am going to ignore the people to my right and back who think that I am the enemy. This community deserves to be dealt with in a way that's reasonable and respectful. I'm representing the owners of Wild Dunes Resort and have been doing that for the last 17 months. I'm now today also representing Hyatt, the operator of the resort that some think is not important to this community. Thank you for your continued dedication to the residents of Isle of Palms and to this noise ordinance. Section C, maximum decibel level, item two. I ask that you reconsider the decibel level. The language calls for a decibel limit over the entire Wild Dunes PDD. Rather, a decibel level just to be established for the Sweet Grass Inn and the Resort Core. That has always been our ask, and much to some other people's interpretation, we never ask for a decibel level to be placed over our valued residents throughout the gates of Wild Dunes. I would suggest that you look at that again. As I've said, yes, we would like a 75 decibel limit for the commercial area of Sweet Grass Inn and the Resort Core from July 1st, 2024 until December 31st, 2024. We will accept the proposed 70 decibel limit at the end of this period if we cannot demonstrate that we will remain in compliance at all times. Please consider remaining, the remaining property of Wild Dunes is equal to the rest of S-R, S-E-R, 2 and 3, and decibel level of 65. We are committed to being a good neighbor while thriving as a business that contributes to the overall well-being of this city through business, real estate, accommodations, and hospitality taxes. The budget is before you today, and you know that we play an important role. In closing, I admire and appreciate the colleagues in the businesses of Front Beach, but you can trust them not to have a decibel limit, but every other resident and commercial building in this city has to have a decibel level? I just ask you to think about that. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I'm sorry that this is a difficult issue, and I hope to be part of the solution. Thank you.
Al Klaus.
Al Klaus, Three Grand Pavilion, our 30th City Council presentation regarding noise ordinance nuisance since April the 13th of '22. Our issue started in March of '21 when the Sweet Grass Inn commenced operations. Per our FOIA requests, I am officially designated as "the threatening neighbor" unquote by Ms. Hack and the Dartlow Organization, who affectionately refer to themselves as the quote "economic engine" of this community. We requested sound abatement two years ago. The south side of the Empire is unfinished by design, allowing noise to infect the neighbors south of the Empire. The duration of the noise results into a nuisance. What would Dart-Hyatt do when the noise ricocheted back at their guests? Mr. David Cohen explained interstates located next to residential neighborhoods require concrete walls when the decibel reading is 67.5 dBAs. Who's going to build the wall? Is the city going to build it? Is Dart going to build it? David Cohen knows what he's talking about, and he's issuing caution to everybody here. We strongly request the nuisance verbiage, which has been extinguished in all prior iterations, be surgically implanted into any and all noise ordinances, proposals. The gatekeeper of the PDD egregiously failed us. Section 5439, purpose of district, compatible commercial uses, were a morally extinguished to satisfy the gatekeeper's insatiable appetite for greed, all at the expense of residents in the PDD and the greater IOP community. Dartlow commitment to council in May 2218 video is categorical misrepresentation. They constructed an event center, an insult to our culture on this island. The noise study engaged by Dart is flawed. The noise monitor was erected as far from our property as possible. Why in the hell didn't we just put it up on the water tower? We provided you an analysis regarding November 15th of '23. In summary, decibels exceeded 75 dBAs in 84% of the 100 segments. We hear the maximum, not the average, we hear the maximum. In conclusion, Mrs. Williamson and ourselves experienced noise from 8:30 a.m. to as late as 1:30 a.m. the next day. Amplified music, which is not allowed per the current ordinance during the day and night. We have a nursery daycare center, a regular daycare center, a cornhole center, a soccer field, a football field, and sweetgrass events in our backyard. You have been provided the videos. Then the after-party and the party breakdown crew. As a reminder, Mrs. Williams' property line
Mr. Klaus.
is adjacent to the Empire's property line, while ours is 35 feet from the Empire's property line. We believe the maximum decibel level for the PDD is 60 dBAs. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next item is special presentations. We have a presentation from
What?
Not signed up?
I don't, I mean, I don't, I didn't write it down, so I don't remember getting a phone call. I mean, Mr. Schmidt, I knew you were for last time, but I didn't get one.
All right.
Then, please go right ahead.
Tom Schmidt, at the Ocean Point Drive, greeting council committee, residents, chiefs, administration, attorneys, everybody. My presentation's kind of changed tonight since Terry talked and she's come home. And it was good to hear a bit of softening of the area if they weren't affected by this noise ordinance, and it doesn't now include all residential neighborhoods in Wild Dunes. That was a big part of what I had to say. Now, I think we're headed in the right direction. And so, the proposal as it was written, and she commented on it, I will too, was just, from my standpoint, reckless and naive. Even worse, it's a punitive to the owners in Wild Dunes while resorting to resort for continued obstruction of op- livability within Wild Dunes. Resort continues to push for a 70 decibel noise limit, now 75, and that noise is unnecessary, unacceptable, and crazy. The resort needed a 1975 PPD was permitted to be residential, not commercial. Resort status remains and must be regulated as such. Committee and council have been kicking this can around for more than three years. Neighborhood communities have in place noise ordinance defining decibel levels associated with times of day. Why can't we live with 60 decibels throughout residential communities in Wild Dunes and throughout the Isle of Palms? Kicking the issue to the WDC, which has been talked about, is not acceptable in Wild Dunes, as resort controls the WDC board via the resort's excessive and unfair voting power. So that isn't an option. Have you feed us right back to the wolf? Apply common sense and recommend a noise ordinance in line with neighboring communities and give primary consideration to the fact that IOP is primarily a residential neighborhood. And I thank you very much, and we all have a great evening.
All right. Next item is presentation from MPS and Trident Construction regarding city hall building assessment, renovation, and expansion options to consider. We're in a building that's built in '91. Rough numbers, was police department at some point in life, so we've asked Trident to join us tonight. We've got Chris Burrell, who works for Trident, is actually an island resident. But we've got John Edwards here from Trident to walk us through a presentation. There's 150-plus pages in your packet on the assessment that these folks did, so we've asked him to take a high-level stab and give us an overview tonight, and we'll take it from there. Thank you for joining us, John.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, council and City of Isle of Palms for allowing us to be here tonight to give a high-level presentation of the assessment of this building we're sitting in today. I'm John Edward Griffith with Trident Construction, my colleagues from McMillan, Patterson, Smith. And running through
Point it right at her machine.
Yeah, thank you. So over the last several months, we've had several consultants and several teammates make numerous visits to this building, doing some investigative work and some review of the shape it's in. And so we'll quickly run through this, kind of broken up into some different sections. So the building envelope, which is the air barrier, keeps the moisture and the water out, is in poor shape. There's visibly, this is the picture of the underside, no air barrier from the underside, and then it's also, the attic space ties in, open in the attic. So that's something we would want to rectify. You can also see water dripping through, in like days like today, dripping through the vinyl siding outside the stairwells. Overall, the structure is in really good shape. It's got strong bones. Biggest deterioration we've seen is in the stairs and the railings on the outside, just on the handrails that need some attention. The wood piles that were on don't lend itself to a vertical expansion, but everything looks to be in good shape the way it is currently. The mechanical systems are all functioning more or less properly. They have reached their life expectancy, and the day we were here investigating that, one or two of the units was iced up that they had to get rectified. But the biggest thing here would be a recommendation to add a dedicated outdoor air system. This helps bring fresh air into the building, pressurizing the space, keeping the moisture and humidity out. From a plumbing standpoint, obviously upgrading all the fixtures would be probably necessary. And one thing, our engineer was really impressed, the hot water heater is 23 years old that she had in this building. That's quite impressive.
Warm-up water.
And the biggest add here would be putting in a full sprinkled system, a sprinkled building. Electrically, the exterior boxes, you can see, have some deterioration, a little rust. And so just touching those up, making sure everything is compatible with the air we have here, the salt air. The generator, as you can hear, the biggest thing there is upgrading to an automatic transfer switch. Right now, it's all manual. Something happens in the middle of the night, it'll kick on automatically and keep everything up and running. And then facilitating a walk platform for that so it can easily be serviced. And then with any sort of expansion, it would be recommended to upgrade from your current 500 amp service to a 600 amp service. The interiors, as you can see in this room, would recommend the floors and ceilings being replaced, and really just trying to be an efficient use of the space and maybe some reorganizing to that regard. Also kind of upgrading the elevator as well. So that being said, that's kind of the quick assessment of the current space of the building. I'm going to turn it over to Brian Fessler, and he's going to run through a few several options.
Can I ask you a question? I read somewhere here about termite damage. Can you comment on that?
Yes, sir. So we opened up an area up on the third floor. That was some old termite damage that had been previously rectified, so we did not find any active termite issues.
You did see active water issues, though? Water intrusion issues?
Yes, ma'am.
Which attract termites.
Yeah, quick, quick question. When I read through your packet, did it say that you weren't able to sort of get inside the walls to kind of inspect so that you really don't know what's behind the walls?
So we opened up a few areas up on the third floor and then pulled off some siding down below outside as well. Obviously, we weren't able to open up all of the walls, so there is some possibility there. But for the most part, everything we could see from the structure, from the studs, looks to be in good shape.
And is it, I think I made a talk to you guys a while back, just kind of for the record here, this was built, was it as kind of an old, it's got a house flavor to it instead of a commercial building flavor to it?
Yes, sir. That's, that's correct. Wood piles, wood framing. There was originally cedar, wood cedar siding on the outside, which has since been covered up with the vinyl. That's all still, still there today, just behind the vinyl.
Thank you. Brian?
We're going to present a few options to kind of open the door to the possibilities of what you could do to address your concerns. So the first option we're going to present is the most economical from the short-term standpoint, and it would be a full gut and renovation of the existing building. We wouldn't add any square footage. We'd address the concerns identified in the facility condition assessment report, and we would reconfigure the offices and spaces to address some of the accessibility concerns, but we wouldn't be able to probably give you all of the spaces you require. So to do that, we would propose an addition. And addition, where it would go and how it would be worked out, we're going to show two potential options for that. Adding in addition to the building would, would obviously cost more, but what it would provide for you is it would be an opportunity to really create a civic presence for the building, the appropriateness of, you know, go from more of a house residential look to something that's appropriate for a city hall, and we could create a new entrance. We could address the concerns in this room as a multifunction space for council chambers and a courtroom. It doesn't have the modern needs of an executive room or judges' chambers. The sequence and flow here creates some challenges for certain activities, and the only way to really truly address that would be to put an addition on the building. So this is a slightly different version where we add on the other side. Both these schemes, adding on either side, have some pluses and minuses in terms of parking, preserving grand trees, that could be worked out. But it's more, more today, it's more of the concept of addressing the conditions in the building and providing addition as, as an option. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Jared, to address two other potential options.
Okay, so option three, we have 3A and 3B. Both of those options are building a new building on the existing site. That would mean, you know, demolishing this building and moving current city staff to a temporary facility while we would construct this. So you're seeing a two-story option is what we're presenting on this page, and on this page, 3B, is a three-story option. The three-story option would include some additional spare footage than what we think is truly needed right now, but it would provide extra space in the event that the city needs more space in the future. It's always going to be more economical to build that extra space in currently rather than waiting in the future and trying to do an addition. So that was, that option was surprising on it. Option four is a 4A and a 4B. Those involve the public works site and building a new city hall over there. That would mean, of course, that the public works facility would have to find a new home on the island. Perhaps the city may have some land that could be used for that. If not, it might require some acquiring of land. But this particular option you're looking at right now is showing that building being adjacent to the connector, parallel with it, with parking on the opposite side. The next option is just another orientation on the same site, and this building would have, I would say, more of a street presence to Palm Boulevard, could include some nice landscaping out front and really give an entrance or a gateway onto the island. So with that last option, you know, I mentioned moving to the public works site, and by doing that, that frees up this existing facility here, too. And we understand that the city has an issue, well, I guess I'll call it an issue, with providing some workforce housing, and this might be a way to solve that problem. With the existing building, we would propose that you do a full renovation of the building. You would be able to accommodate four units per floor in the building, so that's eight total units of workforce housing. And our last suggestion, this is just a pretty picture and idea, but could be to build workforce housing on a different site on the island. This picture, you know, is just a, just an image of some nice townhouses, but whatever would be designed for that would have to, you know, keep in the character of the Isle of Palms in terms of the exterior design.
Yep. So that's kind of a quick overview. Obviously, a lot of information in the packet and the full assessment. Any questions? and the full assessment. Any questions?
Have you looked into the possibility of having the new space as a multi-use building? Particularly, I'm referring to an example in Greer, South Carolina, where they have a city hall, and it's also a civic center, where they have designed, and it's been very successful, that they rent the space out on the weekends for weddings and graduations and things like that, to where they have a little bit of return on the investment, to where it helps with maybe some of the offset of the cost?
Yes, sir, exactly. We have looked at some of those options, and I think a couple of these new addition options could accommodate that. And we're looking at that on some other local jurisdictions as well.
Well, it's getting to be quite common, isn't it?
That's right. Yeah, especially with the, you know, the council chambers being a big spacious area, a big open room, you can easily rent it out for different events.
Scott?
Yeah, just one more quick question, just so I, I want to make sure I understood the, kind of the options in your packet. It looked to me like the cost differential on a square foot for square foot basis, it's $4.50 for the renovation for the 1993, you know, building that we have, but it's only $500 more per square foot for brand new. Is that, is that correct, square foot for square foot?
Yes, sir.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, absolute dollars, I guess it's $600,000 more to do a new building as opposed to renovate.
That's right. And that's what we're seeing, you know, with the, you'd have a selective demo here, and basically still touching all aspects of the building except for the structure. It's a pretty detailed renovation compared to building fresh and new from ground up. You get a lot more efficiencies.
Do you expect the life expectancy of the new building to be a lot longer than renovated?
Yes, sir, absolutely. You know, you're still, with a renovation, you're still dealing with a 1991 building. And so with a new build, you definitely get some extended life expectancy that comes along with that.
And there's more, there's more unknowns with the renovation, too, right? I mean, there's a lot of things we could open up walls and find out, oh, shoot, that's not good.
Yes, ma'am, that's always a concern. Yes.
Yes, just as a matter of a clarification, some of the options that were shown that contemplate relocating city hall to the corner lot, our idea would be to consolidate public works with city hall, recognizing that we just have limited, limited property to move public works to a different facility. And to that end, we're having conversations with SC DOT, who owns a large parcel right behind public works. That, along with the two lots that we own, plus the multiple parcels that make up the public works workshop, we believe that we can be creative in trying to see if we could accommodate both uses in that, in that location. And then that would free up this, this location for some of the ideas that we've discussed, such as workforce housing.
Well, I mean, I, there's a lot here, and a lot to roll through, and too much for, I think, this group. My recommendation is it goes back to the facility committee to wrestle through this thing and come forward with some, some options for council to consider.
One last question, if I, one last question, please. Do you have a timeframe on how long it will take to completely rebuild?
So we would anticipate about 12 months, about a year.
Can, can we get you or somebody, one of y'all or all of you to come to the facilities meeting to hash this out a little bit more detail?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
We'll figure that out.
Douglas, do you have a question?
Nope.
No. John Edward, thank you. And team, Chris, always appreciate y'all's help. It is a lot of information and a lot to chew. Desiree and Douglas, thank you all for teeing that up and getting it to this point. Be interesting discussions as we move forward. Next item, all this is included in your packet. I'm going to ask that we may move through it very quickly tonight, just in interest of time. The dashboard of city operations and the short-term rental report and the departmental reports are all included in your packet. The only thing I would, Amy Alton, if you have the short-term rental report, if you want to put that up. Desiree, no, we are, we just passed our end of permit year, right? So in our new, in two weeks, not quite. I don't know if we have any updated data from a new permit year, if you want to close out the prior year and bring it forward.
Yes, the report that's included in your packets show our short-term rental licenses issued as of April 30th, 2024. So that would complete license year 2024, which started last May through end of April of this year. So we ended the year with a 1,854 for comparison purposes. The prior license year, '22, '23, we ended the year with 1,805. So we ended this year, this, this most recent license years with 1,854. As of last Friday, our staff has processed all the renew, most of the renewals that have come in. We have issued 1,342 licenses, and there's 240 that are pending. That's not to say that more will probably come in, but just wanted to give you, you know, the most up-to-date information we have with that, with that process.
Look at those numbers again, 13 what?
We've issued 1,342, and there are 240 that are pending. And that means people have received an invoice but not paid, or there's any documentation that's still necessary.
Yeah, and today is the 14th. I mean, they ran through pretty quick on the backlog.
Yes, and I think that that was a reflection of having a dedicated short-term rental coordinator processing these. And, you know, she was looking at a lot of information that we've been requesting. So I'm really proud of her for going through all those applications really quick. So yeah, that information is as of last Friday.
Questions, comments? Any departmental report questions? Thank you. Next item, strategic plan, policy initiatives and priorities. A, livability, discussion of recommendations from the public safety committee for a new noise ordinance. You recall, we've been, this is about a two and a half year process, or a little bit more actually, so I wouldn't put this at a breakneck speed by any, by any standpoint. Public Safety Committee has a new proposal for us tonight, an updated version with a six-month trial period, which is included in your packet. So kind of moving forward, the plan is to review this tonight. Right now, we're thinking to do first reading at the May council meeting, second reading at the June meeting. And if we can just pause for a second, I know the May 28th council meeting is the day after Memorial Day. I know I'm going to be out and unavailable. John's going to be out, but planning to call in. What's, what are y'all, every, I just want to make sure we have quorum.
I will not be here.
You're here.
Over here.
And Scott, I know you're back at that point, right?
Yeah, I'm back, I'm back on the 22nd. So, John, John, you're calling in, you said?
Yeah.
So that's six.
I will be here in body.
Say it again?
Got a family wedding that weekend, so.
Fair enough. John, if you, I know this is in our packet, if you want to walk through changes, and I know there's some other changes you're contemplating, particularly in the Wild Dunes area, so if you update us, please.
Yeah, I'll give an update. I'll say a few comments first. I guess we've been, as everybody's recognized, we've been at this a long time. And I do think that at the end of, what we have here with the change is a, a good, a good ordinance for our noise. We talked about this in listening sessions and numerous other forums where people ask for, enforce the regulations, enforce livability. And this is an attempt to do that, because the current, I mean, if you look on our, our current monthly metrics on livability, we had 35 noise complaints in April, no citations, which tells us we don't have an enforceable, I mean, and Chief tells us, well, give me something that's enforceable. I think this is a compromise. Some people, you know, want much lower than this. Some people don't want anything. They want it unrestricted, or leave it where it is. And I think on, kind of where your interests fall, depending on that. But I think this is a good place for us to test. It's a six-month ordinance. It ends at the end of the year. It allows us to come back and tweak. I don't know if people really understand really what a decibel is. Some people pull out their phone and try to interpret it, and there's different, but it's very specific how we measure it in here. It's gone through some expertise with David Cohen, and I want to thank him for the time he's put in on this. I want to thank the planning commission. This really mimics the levels that the planning commission came forward to with. And I think it is a good place for us to begin in trial and test and start to get some, something that's enforceable around livability for once. We went through the, this and changed some items that I'd just like to review. One is, as the mayor said, this is temporary. It's a six-month ordinance that goes from July 1st to December 31st. So there's changes within the ordinance that reflect that. We'll vote on it again in six months. The other change is around how we measure. And I don't want to get too technical, but there's a fast response time, which is within, if you, if you try to take a reading, it's very rapid read, measurements. And then there's slower measurements. And what we're putting in here is demanding that it's a slow response time reading. So the meters will be set to that, and that's how they'll measure it. It's a little bit more forgiving. It's about two decibels or so lower. But it's, it's more forgiving and more conservative. The other thing, and this is the meat of this ordinance, is around the, is around the different zones and the levels. We originally were in use, we're commercial versus residential. As recommended, we go to zones. This reflects zones. So SR1, SR2, SR3 zoning is at 65 decibels during the day. The 55 at night. And by the way, all zones are 55 at night. I think there's a strong belief that there's, at nighttime, you know, there's like a line in the sand on noise, and things should be dropped. So it goes to 55 decibels for all zones. In the second area, we have GC1, GC3, LC, and the PDD zones, and that's at 70 decibels. I am recommending, and from some of the discussions, I think there's agreement that we break that out as it's been talked about. And we go back and we figure out how to split the PDD zone up into a residential zone that's at 65, and the commercial zone of the PDD is at 70. So we'll figure out how to do that. But that's my suggestion on what we bring to a, a first reading. And, and then in the third area is the front beach, ZZ, GC2. We're remaining, we kept that into, that it would be an excessive noise determination. But the recommendation is to put testing monitors along front beach for six months and get noise readings, so that we have data that we can use to come back in six months and put some decibel levels in there. Other than that, from the last, from the last version, there's, there's no other changes. So that's my recommendation, again, with that modification, splitting the PDD into commercial and, and residential that we bring to a first reading at the end of the month.
Thank you, John. Questions, comments? Jim?
I just have one clarification. We've been getting a lot of emails with concerned citizens that think that we are raising decibel levels from the current noise ordinance. There are no decibel levels as maximums in the current noise ordinance. So what we are trying to do is establish noise ordinance, noise ordinances that can be enforceable. So please, give us six months, let us test out what we have, and go forward from there.
Desiree, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no, sorry. Go ahead and weigh in again. I mean, I'm glad to see some movement here in these decibel limits. But I, you know, I just, I have a hard time with 65, which is deemed in other communities as being a full-on commercial use limit. I have a hard time figuring out how we then apply that to our residential zones that are by definition supposed to be low-density and built in a way that, you know, doesn't, quiet, low-density, it just doesn't seem to me to be a good number. I think that, you know, you look at other communities, and we've got 55 during the day in residential districts, 65, you know, for some commercial areas. Sometimes, I've seen at Surfside, they've jumped up to 70 in a commercial three district. That's probably similar to our front beach, would be my guess. But, you know, I just, I, I just feel like we're, we're trying to set a limit that we don't want to reach, but we're really thinking about it in reverse. We're not, like the comment about the front beach. I agree with Ms. Hack. I don't, I don't think there needs to be an area of this island that goes unlimited. And if the idea is that we just test a lot and see how much noise they're actually making, and then pick a number that they like or we like, I mean, that doesn't seem to be the way that we should attack this challenge with noise. And, you know, I think that we do have a challenge with noise. And I would like to see us address it, but I just, it feels like we just don't have the votes for anything that I would deem reasonable. I, it's just, and there are other issues, too, that I've, that I've had with the past one. One, not having that whole island included. Not, you know, really specifically defining what a city-sponsored event is. I still am not crazy about the ideas of the passes given to commercial entities to apply for a permit. I, you know, I just, I think that the efforts that have been undertaken by the hotel and the recommendations at the last workshop for noise monitoring devices are evidence of the fact that we, as a community, feel like we have an issue that we need to address. You know, a noise monitor requires somebody to set a decibel limit to it, to figure out. So, you know, we're, we're still talking about decibels. It just feels like the way we're coming at it is who gets to be the person to decide what that is. Is it, you know, are we going to essentially delegate our responsibilities at council to the tourism industry to make recommendations that in my mind feel too high? I mean, we started at a request for 75 from the hotel. I mean, that's industrial use in other areas. You know, we don't, we've heard from the rental community that they don't really want any. They, you know, they want the more subjective manner, or the subjective guide that we're using right now. But, you know, that's not what we're talking about anymore. I just, I think this needs a lot of work before first reading. And I would agree that perhaps sometimes maybe not doing something is better than doing something that's not, you know, that's not a good idea.
But on the, specifically around the city-hosted or sponsored events, what's, what's missing there from your view?
Well, it's what's included. It's the, the language that says, but, but not limited to. Because that, that's what opens the door to, I mean, I've witnessed and seen the results of, you know, what, how we determine what a city-sponsored event is. And a lot of times, it's just private entities, private businesses, whether here or off-island, that come here, that just want to do things that are incompatible with our noise ordinance. And so, yeah, and so, no, it's fine. And so, you know, they ask to be excluded, and then it's a free-for-all. And, you know, it's just, it doesn't, it seems, it doesn't seem like that's in the best interest of the entire island. I would like something that is island-wide, that is reasonable, that is objective, and, you know, that protects everybody, the businesses and the residents alike.
So in that particular example, it's parenthetical that you have the issue.
Yeah.
Got it.
So the, to Elizabeth's first, I think it was the first thing she mentioned, the 65 in residential, where, where did that number come from? Was that the planning commission's recommendation, or?
I believe that was from the planning commission.
Yeah. I would say that kind of globally, how they came to their numbers was looking at the data of the monitors that were set up. They had sound experiments in this room where they, they listened to different, different decibel ratings. But I think they really gauged at, looked at what the decibel ratings were with really nothing going on. You know, so quiet times of the day, 3:00, 3:00 AM. You know, so quiet times of the day, 3:00 AM, 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM, no complaints. And they, you know, they were seeing times where that would be 50, 60 decibels with nothing going on. So I think they, and then they would see this, this kind of level start to ramp up. Sometimes, you know, generally, 7:30, 8:00 in the morning, traffic starts going, but still not kind of a party. And that would pretty quickly get into 60, 65 decibels. So I think they didn't want to set it at a number where they felt like just life would be triggering a violation, where anytime they showed up, just because it's, it's an active summer day with, with stuff going on, that it would show a number that violated the code. So that, I think that was the basis of their numbers.
And I guess, too, that, to kind of, to take that one step further, because I think there's been a lot of confusion. And based on different noise ordinances that I have read, the, whether, where the reading is taken, whether it's taken like at the edge of your property, which is your, you know, your fence line or the street or your drive, whatever, or if it's inside of a residence. And, I mean, that, that makes a crazy big difference. And so I'm wondering if, and I hate to say this at this stage of the game. I'm afraid that I'm saying such a jawn on this one.
We can take another two years, don't worry about it.
I do wonder if maybe, if maybe that's the, where we're in the, in a, we've gotten ourselves into a problem. Although, I mean, if you're inside of your residence and you either have your windows open or maybe you just have bad windows, I mean, you know, there's, there's all kinds of crazy differences there, too. But, you know, if I'm standing out in my backyard, right next to my fence, and my backyard neighbor is pressure-watching, you know, it's, it's a lot different than it is if it's inside my house. So that's, I'm just not sure how.
So one of the iterations that we've, that we've looked at for the past maybe couple of years included a plainly audible definition that I think tried to deal with that. And the threshold for a complaint to be valid or for enforcement to be justified was when the noise or, well, the, yeah, the noise, whether it's music or speech, was disruptive or plainly audible inside a residence. And I think that that.
So I did not, so we did have that one.
We went away from that. At some point, we did. I can't tell you what version we were, it was, but at some point, we did. And I think in an effort to get away from a very subjective read of the ordinance that was taken out, if I recall, from, from one of the drafts. But there are noise ordinances that use that as the guide. If you're inside your house, doors are closed, windows are closed, and you hear the noise at a certain threshold, then that, that is disruptive.
But I assume that that's more cumbersome for the police, having to go, now they're having to go into someone, you know, it's the person complaining's home, but still they're having to enter someone's home, you know.
Well, you have to have permission.
I mean, obviously, but even that, it's probably not an ideal situation, I would imagine.
And I do think you get, you can get older homes that, you know, so you're kind of holding somebody to a standard that could be different based on the construction type, which could be all over the board. So the data that the Planning Commission looked at was a sound meter, monitor placed in the same location that a, an officer would generally be responding to a complaint at a commercial location. So at the residential boundary, property line boundary, measuring a commercial operation. So they were trying to kind of mimic the circumstances that the code is referencing with how they were monitoring decibels.
And the current draft that, that you have in front of you does define where the sound measurement could be taken. And it provides the flexibility for the officer to take that measurement from the property line or anywhere within the bounds of, of the complainant's property. So if they want the police department to take the reading from an elevated porch or somewhere else in their property, then they would be, they would have to authorize that, but they would be allowed to, to do that. Which may be challenging if you come to think about it, because if they're taking a measurement in an outside screen porch, that may trigger the threshold, you know, the whatever cap we set for the sound at a particular time. But inside the house, it much, may be probably much lower. So I think that that's.
Well, I think the ordinance says, and I think we talked to chief about this, I don't know if chief wants a comment, but if you get a complaint, you go from the complainant's boundary line and take the measurement. If you don't, some complaints are anonymous. So then you have to go to the right-of-way of where the property is to take the measurement. So that's where, that's where they're going to be taking measurements from.
So I've thought about that, too, where we take the measurements from. I mean, I toyed around with the idea of taking it just from as close as you could get to the middle of someone's property, so you don't necessarily have to be inside their home or whatever, just, you know, officer's best judgment. But to throw out possibly even more radical idea, I read a north of ordinance of another city that what they did was get the average ambient noise level of their community of all different times of day and areas, averaged it over however long. And their noise ordinance reads any noise that, and we can decide, you know, five or 10 decibels above that ambient level noise at whatever time of day it is, is abnormal of the community. I thought it was interesting because it does kind of put everybody on the same playing field. We're not putting, you know, one district versus the other district or the, you know, front beach versus Wild Dunes. It's kind of putting everybody on a more equal playing ground, just in my opinion. But that would take a lot of time, obviously, to go get those readings and a lot of our officers' time, I guess, to do that. But anyway, just thought I'd throw that out there as an idea.
Well, that is one thing we can get from these noise monitors that we're proposing putting up throughout the community is get a background reading.
We're only looking, I think we're only looking at putting noise monitors up at front beach, not throughout the community, just to get a front beach, a set of data around front beach. That is the primary commercial zone of the island, so we wanted to get readings there and understand where they are. Doesn't mean we have to set them where they are, but we at least understand where they are. And I encourage any of you to spend some time with David Cohen. If you want to know about what 65 is versus what 70 is and why they chose to put the numbers where they were, where the Planning Commission, he's, he's got more information about this than you probably care to know. But he, he's very knowledgeable and can explain the details to you and get into the weeds however far you want to get to with him. But he definitely understands it and can explain why the levels were set where they were. And like I said, I'm not, I don't know if I know what 65 decibel sounds like, okay? I don't know what 60 decibel sounds like. I'm going on what the experts tell me that's a reasonable, based on this island, is a reasonable setting for our residential area. And I'm willing to give it a try for six months, realizing that we're not going to live with it, have to live with it beyond that. But we can sit here and argue for another two and a half years where there should be 62 and a half or 65 or 55. And we're still not doing anything for the residents that don't have a noise ordinance in place. Because the current noise ordinance, if you read it, says there's no amplified music. So the police aren't enforcing that. We can't enforce that. I mean, every day, there'd be a violation of it. And it's subjective and people aren't calling the police. We had 35 complaints in April. We know for a fact that numerous people don't even bother to call the police that are irritated and sitting up listening to noise that they shouldn't have to listen to because they don't, they don't want to bother the police. They feel like if they do call, nothing's going to get done. Variety of different reasons. But we have people on this island that have been complaining about it for how many times. And now's the time for us to do something, quit arguing around whether it's a half a decibel too high or five decibels too low. I think we need to move on and try it for six months.
Scott, anything? Sorry, none. Don't want to cut you out.
No, thanks. I think it's all in some.
And then some?
I think, I think, I think there's enough guidance to go back and make some edits and see, see where this goes.
Yeah. So again, I mean, first reading at the end of this month goes back to committee. For any, Scott, to your point, any additional changes, and then comes back for second reading.
Can I just make one comment?
Yep.
I don't know what 65 sounds like either. But I know other communities that are similar to ours deem that as a full-blown commercial noise level. And to me, that is completely incompatible with SR1, SR2, SR3, 98% of the PDD. That is not, in my opinion, what constitutes a quiet, low-density neighborhood. And that's just, that's just where I am. I, you know, I.
Good to go.
Yep.
So with the, I just want to clarify. The goal would be for us to split up the PDD.
Yep.
And incorporate it into the residentially-used properties within Wild Dunes to be included in this, with the same decibel limit as SR1, SR2, and SR3. And then the commercial core to be included in the GC1, GC3, and limited commercial category with a maximum of 70 and 65 for the residentially. The golf courses, that technically is a commercial operation. Would that be included under the commercially-used properties within the PDD?
I just think the core area.
Just the core area.
That's not a commercial classification as far as the county's concerned. They deem it like a specialty use.
Recreational use.
Yeah, not parkland, open space.
Okay. Condominiums, all of that would be under the residential category? Okay. We can, we've had conversations with the legal team and we think we can come up with some language for you all to, to look at at the May meeting.
Okay.
And what about addressing Elizabeth's concerns on the two items preventing the not limited to, I think we ought to address those.
And, yeah, the city, city-sponsored events?
The city-sponsored events.
Yes, the city-sponsored.
The city-sponsored events and then the ability.
Could you provide some?
And then the ability to apply for a permit to outside of the home.
Scott, we're losing you.
It was like, it's the very last.
Wait, I heard, we heard you. We just want to let.
Just a lot of static.
Just want to let you know that we're getting a lot of static from your end.
Yeah.
So, okay, back to that. Would you, would you mind just providing clarity for us?
Sure.
So the city-sponsored event status, more clarity on what would qualify?
It's really the parenthetical.
It's the parenthetical against me. But not limited to. Once you say, "but not limited to," that opens the door to anything that we would be interested in.
You said two issues, but both issues are in the same.
Well, there's that issue, and then there's number nine. A commercial property owner or business owner may apply to city council for an exception to this ordinance.
So that was something that we discussed with the Public Safety Committee and no recommendations were made to change that. Certainly would want to hear from the rest of the group about what kind of changes you all would like to see would entertain.
I realize that's just a hang-up of mine. I mean, I'm not suggesting that.
I think there was a recommendation. We said, that's a per event. We said per event.
The one that opened the door to the exception, we're going to open the door to the exception.
Okay, I'd like to.
John?
I think, I think we did say we wanted to change to that. We talked about, I think Jan brought it up, whether this is an exception for the whole, you know, for the entire, in other words, if, if a commercial establishment came and said, "I want an exception to this," is it forever or is it per event? We said we was per event, one event.
One event a year, one event a weekend, one event.
I mean, you'd have to vote on it per event. You can't just do a blanket exception.
So we have to vote on it any time.
I just want to make sure that we can have a Fourth of July celebration. That's.
But that's not a private.
That's not the issue.
That's not, yeah, thank you.
This is, that's city.
I mean, that's not what you're raising.
No, well, not in the finest.
Other people, communities celebrate, too.
Desiree, you have what you need.
I think so, yes.
I mean, if you don't, that's fine.
No, no, no.
I'm just going to make sure before we.
Yeah, we got it.
I'd like to make one point, please. As far as these exceptions goes, that's just for commercial enterprises. A resident cannot even apply for a special permit for high school graduation, baby showers, Christmas parties, whatever. They aren't even allowed to even apply to be considered, and I have a real problem with that.
Desiree?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
We're all good. Thank you.
Thank you all. Next item, public services. One, coyote management. Chief Cornet, I know you did this at the Public Safety Committee, but maybe an abbreviated version here tonight on our efforts and kind of what's next and what's going on. Thank you, chief, for joining us.
Good evening. So to give you an update on coyotes, kind of like what I did with the Public Safety Committee meeting, with some updates that I didn't have at that time. First off, as you are all aware, we have had an increase in coyote sightings. This is a typical time of year where we do see them. But we have seen more sightings and more encounters specifically attacking pets than what we've seen in the past five years since I've been here. Part of that is because they are in mating season right now and now they're rearing pets, or not pets, pups. I hope coyotes don't have pets. I don't know what they would be. But they're now.
Not rabbits.
Definitely not rabbits. They're not rearing their, or they're rearing their pups right now. They're trying to feed them and some of those things. So what we've done is I personally met with the Director of the Department of Natural Resources. We were at a meeting in Columbia together and before I allowed him to leave, I don't want to say that, before he left, I had a conversation with him. And mostly because there was conversation about that we were prohibiting people or prohibiting DNR from hunting on the island. That was a comment that had been brought to my attention. And then I just asked him specifically about that. They do not, DNR does not, and has not come onto public property to hunt coyotes for these types of issues. His concern would be the risk associated with so. He recommended doing what we are doing now, which is trapping. I have also reached out and talked with a SEDNR wildlife biologist. I asked him to join us tonight, but due to medical reasons, he wasn't able to be here. We will try for our future meeting to have him join us. Specifically, I asked him because related to comments that we had received for sterilizing, for putting something out to sterilize coyotes. And his response was that US and South Carolina law prohibits toxicants being used, and that would include sterilization for coyotes. His biggest concern with that would be that you may unintentionally sterilize somebody's pet, and that could be an issue. The only approved method for sterilization is to trap a neuterance or spay, which we do not trap coyotes now and let them go again. Once we trap them, we euthanize them. Hunting coyotes was a topic that has come up several times. There is a significant amount of risk associated with hunting coyotes and something that we would want to make sure we pay close attention to. Everybody I've talked to about that has brought up the risk associated with it because we do not have a, a location that we can close off to the public. Like in most places where this happens, they have a golf course or something that they close to the public and nobody's there. So they're able to do that. You also must follow any state hunting laws that are outlined by DNR and state statute. You have to have a hunting license. One thing to point out is that police officers do not have to have hunting license. That is not a requirement to be hired. Many of them don't, don't hunt. But just something I wanted to point out. We have reached out, or I reached out and spoke with the State Director of the US Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services slash Wildlife Services to see if they could assist us in something.
That's a big business card right there, chief.
It is. I left part of it out, too. But I spoke with him yesterday and his first response about hunting was that it is very risky and very expensive. He is, however, going to come out and meet with me on May 28th. That is our planned date for now, so that he could come look to see if maybe that changes. He did go again to say that it is risky and stressed that it is also very expensive. He recommended that we use the preventative methods that we are currently using, like trapping, and then educating public about other preventative methods that we'll get to here shortly. Some of the things that we have taken or are currently doing right now as a police department, we have deployed. He did go again to say that it is risky and stressed that it is also very expensive. He recommended that we use the preventative methods that we are currently using, like trapping, and then educating public about other preventative methods that we'll get to here shortly. Some of the things that we have taken or are currently doing right now as a police department, we have deployed traps. There's also a risk associated with traps and that's, anything we do mostly has some type of risk associated with it. We do not trap and relocate. As I said earlier, when we catch a coyote in a trap, they are euthanized. There is a lot of misinformation that we take them or relocate them and we do not. We have three sets of traps, which is a total of six traps. Recently, we moved them after a resident sent me a video of what we believe to be a den with some pups that were making a lot of noise. We sent our trapper out there to follow up on that video and confirm that that was a den in that area and there was a lot of activity, so we transferred our traps out there. And as a result, yesterday, we caught one coyote. It was a male, still fairly young, but not a pup, and he was caught and euthanized. We still have our traps out. There are also multiple traps that are on private property put out by the same trapper who checks with us daily and keeps us updated on what happened. We've attempted to use the drone to see if we could get to have some success at identifying dens or locations. So far, it has not been very successful using the drone at that elevation. We just weren't seeing what we were hoping we were going to see. Heat signatures are kind of difficult because they're moving around, but we're going to continue to try those efforts to see if we can pinpoint where the activity's happening so that we can move our traps to those areas. We've deployed signs along the beach access pass where incidents have occurred. Believe it or not, we put them out and within 24 hours of putting them out, the first time, what we initially put out, 12, we found eight the next day. Others were removed. So, we have purchased additional signs and put more signs out. We've also began to, we've always tracked coyote sightings specifically on an Excel sheet just so we kind of know where they're at. And attacks might have been put in there, but I felt that a better avenue to track coyote attacks on other pets or people would be to use incident reports. Even though typically incident reports are for criminal matters and things that we're going to follow up and investigate, they're also a very easy way for us to document what happened and typically what the news is asking for under FOIA's for what has happened. And that has led to some confusion in the past, so we have moved all of them to incident reports for tracking.
How should people be, excuse me, reporting if they see them?
Sightings, you just call our police department, 843-886-6522. Call and talk to the person that answers the phone. That's a communication specialist. They will put it into the Excel sheet that we all have access to. If you have an attack, you can call and tell them that there was an attack or a bite and they will then have an officer come out and complete an incident report for you. We've had some that have called after they initially reported those and we've gone back and done incident reports for them as well.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Some of the preventative actions that we would recommend based on the SEDNR Coyote booklet and the USDA Director's feedback, fences with spinning PVC pipes along the tops. Coyotes can climb fences. You know, I have done a lot of research on coyotes since I've been here and I've learned a lot of things. They're very intelligent animals, much more intelligent than I think we give them credit for, but they can climb fences. And so, one of the things that they recommend is putting some type of device on the top of your fence so that they can't get that footing to go over and they'll slide down. Avoid feeding small animals that can come to your yard because that's prey. And where prey is, that's where they're going to go when they're hungry right now. Avoid leaving the food out for those animals. Even if the small animals aren't coming to your area, the coyotes are scavengers. They're hungry. They're going to go wherever there's something they can eat and so they may even come for that food. When you're out, keep your pets on leashes, keep them within eyesight. And the typical thing is to get loud, as loud as you can when you see one, to chase them off. I know we've had some incidents where the coyotes were not as receptive to that as they have been in the past, so that'd be something that we ask people to do. Frightening devices, those are little things you can get that have little glowing eyes or they flash lights or they make some noise. Those are great for a very short period of time. As I said, coyotes are smart. They pay attention to the area where they're at and if they see something consistently in the same spot, then they're going to recognize that it's not a threat. So, if you have them, move them around, but don't be over-reliant on a frightening device. Putting lids on your trash cans, if you keep trash cans outside, keep the lid on it. Something else that we've talked about on our end is maybe putting lids on the beach trash cans, something like that to cover those, just because we don't, as I said, they're scavengers. We don't want them to go digging through trash or going after the raccoons that are digging through trash that they get out there. And then, of course, reporting the sightings to our communication specialists or to the police officers for attacks. Are there any questions?
Back to the feeding and I have been asked by a specific homeowner who's had issues with people that feed raccoons and I know that the police department has been involved with this, but it seems like at this point, we need to be more aggressive enforcing because we do have, it is a code violation, it is a violation of L.A. Palm's code to feed wild animals. So, I kind of feel like people that are doing that, they, A, they need to be aware, but if we know about it as a city, we need to be a lot more strict about that.
I will look into, I'm not aware of an ordinance where we can't feed them. I'm not saying it's not there. I will look to verify and make sure that we are taking all of the actions appropriate with it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
During your study and research, my experience has been, I was just wondering what your feelings were that after mating and pup season is over, they tend to be less aggressive?
Yes, sir.
Is that your...
That's correct. We should start to see, DNR says that typically you'll see them through about mid-summer is when it really dies off there, but we in the past have really seen towards the end of May, we start to see them, they dwindle, which is great because remember, we have shorebirds. The lease turns will start nesting here soon and so that's another concern that we have to keep in mind with the coyotes. But we do typically see, when the shorebirds come, we tend to see less coyotes. Not that the shorebirds are chasing them off, but...
The coyotes by nature are migratory and they're not necessarily here year-round. They go explore other areas, especially if they can't find prey. Is that your understanding?
Yes, sir, that's correct. They are all over the place. They are not a species that is from South Carolina. They are an invasive species. They were brought here actually for deer hunting and that is part of the reason that they are a threat to our community is because, or our state, is because they do attack deer and they actually hurt the number of deer that we have in our state. So, they do, but they move. They don't stay in one general area and we have seen them, when the tide is low, they'll swim a little bit and then they'll get on that puff mud and they'll start walking through and move from islands to Mount Pleasant or we've seen them crossing the connector or crossing the Hunley Bridge. I guess they use modes of transportation just like us, but yes, they're very migratory. They move and they're all over the state. This isn't specific to us. Every time I've talked to somebody from DNR, they have stressed that this is something that everybody in South Carolina is dealing with right now with the coyotes.
Chief, we've clearly had an increase in attacks.
Yes, sir.
By any way you want to measure it. And they seem like they've gotten more significant from smaller dogs and pets to large pets now. So, there's been a uptick here of maybe in aggressiveness, if you will, by the coy... What are we attributing that to? Does the sheer numbers have increased or what's driving these increased attacks?
It's hard to say. You know, it could be a lot of different factors. It could be that maybe there's more and that's hard for us to know because we don't really have a mechanism to track coyotes. You know, we chip wolves, we chip different types of animals and we can see where they're at. I don't really think anybody's doing that with coyotes other than the state used to do one and you could get a prize if you caught that one. But it also is, you know, as we've continued to build on the island, a lot of the wooded areas, we've gone from smaller houses on big lots to big houses on the lots. And as you take away the wooded areas, we're kind of forcing them into these, the dunes, which is a more populated area. We certainly don't want them in the neighborhood either. We want them to go somewhere else, but maybe that plays a role. They're in the dunes and once they get in there and they're, they get established, the prey is going to move on just to stay alive. And so, when that happens and they start to move around, they're grabbing the first thing they're seeing, which are going to be unfortunately pets.
So, is there any, other than, you know, you and the trapper that we have and maybe even DNR, is there experts that we can bring in that can help consult with us on where they are? You know, identify specifically where they are and then, like I said, a public safety, be more surgical on how are we going after them? You know, pinpoint where they are, putting traps around there, the right bait. Somebody that does this, you know, that we consider an expert in this, that we can use to bring in?
So, our trapper is licensed and they are considered an expert, but that's also the reason I reached out to USDA State Director. As soon as he is free, unfortunately, he cannot be free to come down here until the 28th, but that's why he's coming down here so that he can look at that. And that's what his unit does, is they work with any time you're having animals that are in an area that are causing issues and any concern, they come out and try to help mitigate that or, as their website says, to find ways that we can all cohabitate in a safe manner.
I guess the last thing I have is around controlled hunts. I know that there's a risk associated with it, but is there a way for us to, if trapping isn't successful and there's still a need that we need to call the numbers out? Is that an option of some sort? Has anyone thought through the details of that and what may be acceptable in terms, you know, whether you use crossbows or bows or something else?
So, either, yes, we've had a lot of conversations about it and again, that's part of the conversation with USDA and DNR that I've had. DNR won't do it and USDA is concerned because there's going to be significant risk with people walking on the beach. Our beaches have people at night and even if you're using a crossbow or a bow and arrow, they could still hit something and bounce off and hit somebody else. Or, you know, the moment you hit somebody's pet and you kill their pet, it might be a prized pet or God forbid, we hurt a person. You know, that is, there's no coming back from that mistake. That is a significant mistake with a whole lot of risk and I don't think anybody wants that risk. But USDA is coming out here, we're going to look at that to see if there is a way we can do it to mitigate as much risk as possible to do that, but my recommendation would be that there is a significant amount of risk the city would bear with that and that could be very devastating for us if it goes wrong and it only takes one.
One quickly. Remind me how much it costs us to have these traps set? What are we paying now?
$1,650 every two weeks for the number that we currently have.
Which is?
We have three sets, so for three sets, we're spending $1,650 every two weeks. And something else to point out is that this is not something that was in the budget to put the traps out there. It's really hard to know how many we're going to put, how active it's going to be and they have significantly been unsuccessful using traps in the previous years. And so, we had taken them out of the budget two or three years ago, I believe. So, that's something that will be over-budget in this budget year.
Where are the traps?
Right now, we have them around the 3,600 block because that's where the den was identified based on the video.
Like, are they in the dune? Are they...
We put them as close to, as far in the dunes as we can, but we have to stay on public property. We don't want them in the middle of the...
Because they're leg traps, so like...
Correct.
If your dog is running through the dune...
There's a chance it could get caught on a trap, yes. And it's not just our traps. Remember, some of the private properties extend beyond and into the dunes in some areas and they have, there are some private property homeowners that have traps placed by the same trapper we're using in those dunes as well. So, that is part of the reason this leash law is so important, that people keep their pets on leash.
Keep your dogs out of the dunes.
And that may be something we want to consider, just new signage around the areas where the traps are placed, coyote traps in the area, keep pets on a leash.
We don't want to...
We don't want to take the coyotes off, but...
They haven't learned to read yet.
These traps, they're not soft traps at all, are they, sir?
They're not, no, sir.
They're pretty brutal.
They are. They're...
So, a pet could really get maimed if they got in one?
Correct, yes, sir.
Chief, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Probably an update after the USDA meeting, so we'll look for that to get the next Public Safety.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, discussion of Planning Commission recommendations regarding stormwater management. Douglas, how fast are you feeling tonight, pal?
I'll go quick, I'll go quickly, even though it's complex. These recommendations are coming, they started with the recommendations from the Davis and Floyd Drainage Master Plan. Planning Commission met with Davis and Floyd, also met with Thomason Hutton Engineers, talked about our ordinances, talked about ways the ordinances could be improved. In your packet is a red line and a memo that kind of gives the high points of that. There are really four kind of primary changes. The first one is there would be a requirement, and I will say that all of these requirements are aimed to apply only in the residential districts outside of Wild Dunes. And there is a typo currently, it says SR1 and SR2. It should also include SR3. That was called by Desiree, not the zoning administrator, but Desiree. The first one, and this is probably the biggest one, would require residential properties to retain some stormwater and the amount and the ratio that you get to is roughly equivalent to the first hour of a 10-year storm event. And that ratio is 0.3 cubic feet of retention for every one square foot of impervious surfacing. So, you cover 1,000 square feet, that would mean that you would retain 333 cubic feet of water to offset that amount. The second one is, and this is currently our code, it limits how high people can build to one foot above the road. There are very low roads on the island and this is coming in kind of reaction to sea level rise, houses that have very low slabs being inundated by high tides. And the recommendation was to allow, kind of regardless of the elevation of the road, always allow a property owner to fill to at least 7.4. That's the elevation that they felt like, you know, is probably going to be subject to tidal inundation from this point going forward, maybe once, twice a year, probably becoming more frequently. The idea being there that if you force somebody to build lower than that, you are kind of creating a problem that you know about going forward for the future of that house.
Douglas, real quick, so item one is new.
Correct.
Item two is a revision of existing rules.
That's correct.
What about the people on either side of the structure that's going to be built up to 7.4 feet?
So, that would be, that is theoretically covered by number three.
Okay.
And that would be that a civil engineer or landscape architect would certify and design any changes so that the stormwater after construction mimics or reduces pre-construction conditions. So, that, so an engineer, if you were in one of these low lots, the code would allow you to go to 7.4 feet with your slab as long as a designer is comfortable in signing off that in doing that, you're not going to increase or significantly change the runoff pattern or quantity.
And is that a sign-off we think that industry can do?
We think so. We think so. Both engineers we talked to, of course, we talked to engineers the last time we went through this and they weren't willing to do that, but that's, there is a version of that currently in our code. That's another one that's a modification. Right now, it's just generic language that says a designer's going to sign off that it will not adversely impact. There's more detail there now where it says has to mimic and cannot exceed pre-construction levels.
Douglas, can I go back to two a minute?
Yes.
It says that they are allowed to elevate their property to at least 7.4 in elevation. So, that's the minimum they're allowed, but they could go higher. So, what would dictate them to be, what sets the limit on high they can go?
So, it would be, and maybe, that's the wording in my memo and maybe that's misleading, but the way that would work is you could go one foot above the road, which is the current way that the entire island works, but you would have this added provision that if you have a road that's less than 6.4, you could always go to at least 7.4.
So, it's a max of 7.4?
7.4 for lots that are lower than 6.4.
Right.
Yeah, in other instances, if your road is at eight, you could go to nine.
There's not, there's not many.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's very limited.
That's a very, 6.4 is a very, very low elevation. Kind of average out here is nine, 10.
There's only a few places where this is actually...
That is true.
Where the road is low and... Where the road is low enough that...
Got you.
Think of places that high tide, you know, high tides routinely get over. In front of the fire station, that's lower than 6.4. There is a new subdivision in the Forest Trail area, that road is lower than 6.4.
Five new alleys.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. So there, there are, there are a few areas, but those are the areas you know about where at a really high tide, they're getting water up onto the road.
All right.
Last one, and this is, this is, this is solely what triggers a drainage plan requirement. And the thought here is excluding pools from the calculation of when a stormwater management plan is required. The thought there is that pools are, are catching roughly the first hour of a 10-year storm. They do eventually overflow, but this is coming from dealing with the public, the public submitting a plan for a pool, and our office saying, with this pool, you need to do a fully engineered drainage plan, kind of constantly hear back that this pool's actually going to catch the water. Why am I, why am I doing this plan? The other part of this is with the kind of added calculations, storage, retention, we think that we're adding probably between $20,000 and $40,000 of expense to a property owner wanting to develop a property. And so we felt like with that kind of turning up of the requirement, that it would be reasonable to not require people just building a pool to do these drainage plans. Pools will still be included in the calculation, the limit, you know, we have a lot coverage limit, an impervious limit, they'll still be counted there. Again, this is just when, dictating when a drainage plan is triggered.
And this was presented to the Public Services and Facilities Committee a few weeks ago, and the recommendation from that committee was that we do not exclude the pools. Do not. So just, it's not included in your packet, we just provided the same memo that came out of the Planning Commission, but that was the discussion at the committee level, that they should be included and still require the development of a stormwater management plan.
I have a couple of concerns. One is with new construction in particular. My concern is that we have drainage problems out there now. And I look at new construction, when you start, it's a clean slate, and you have an opportunity to at least improve the situ, eliminate the problem for that piece of property. And what we are doing is just maintaining the problems that we already have with this kind of approach to, to, I think, the development, where we're saying, well, you know, as long as you don't create any more runoff, then you're fine. But if, if the property is already causing problems with runoff, we're not solving that problem at all. So the new construction is that. The second one is, of course, my pet project. Roads are not detention ponds. And letting runoff go into our streets is, to me, a disadvantage to the public good. I mean, my, my house may be high and dry, but I can't go anywhere because the street's flooded because of all the runoff on it. So I, I really have a problem when we look at that part of, that, that issue. I don't think we can sitter that. And, you know, especially this one where we're elevating properties way higher than the, than the road itself. That is true, that they're going to be higher than the road, and all of the runoff, or part of the runoff from that property is going to be on the street, and the street will be impassable.
Yeah, I, you know, from a traditional design standpoint, the stormwater conveyance system would be in the road.
There isn't any stormwater conveyance. Okay, if there was a stormwater conveyance system to, to catch that runoff, yes. We don't have that.
Some, some places do not have that, that's correct. I think from the Planning Commission's perspective, and they talked about this, the, the alternative, and so you're going to catch the, the, you're going to catch a fair amount of water now on the property. Once it starts overflowing, the water has, it's going to go somewhere. Can't, you can't hold all of every storm, so it's going to run somewhere. And if, if it doesn't go to the road, that means it's going to go to the surrounding neighbors.
But you're talking about a 10-year storm here, is what it is. And in, and in other communities, they require any water on the property to be taken care of on that property. So that, I think our attitude is, I know we're low, and I know that, that we have drainage issues now, and I just think this kind of, especially allowing us to elevate lots, is just going to cause way more problems with our drainage going forward.
Well, you can, you can already, I mean, that is a, the only change there are these few, few low lots.
I know.
And they're, they did talk about kind of the, you can never design a system that will catch all of the water. I mean, in a perfect, in a perfect world, you'd catch every drop.
Just talking about 10-year flood.
And they talked a little bit about, could we go to a 25-year storm? Could we go to a 100-year storm?
It'd be nice, but no, you can't.
You can't, you just can't.
You can't hear.
It goes from kind of a 25, $40,000 improvement to, you know, like what we deal with, where it's multiples of millions, to, to capture massive storms.
Right.
So that's, I mean, that's a little bit of, I think that it will, it's better than where we are now. It does not get, I think, to your point, Jan, it doesn't get to a perfect solution where you're capturing and holding every drop of water that ever comes on your property.
Yeah.
And that's kind of just a balancing act of these codes.
We're not going to fix everything with a change.
No, no, we're still going to be low, we're still going to have massive storms, we're still going to have, while we have consultants on every edge of our properties, you know, studying these challenges going forward.
So Douglas, what's your, was the plan here, so it's been through committee, is the plan to bring it for a first reading?
Yes.
In May?
Yep. That would be the plan.
And then back to committee for any more edits or changes?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Douglas, that would be with the pool exclusion?
Yeah, that, that's the committee recommendation.
That's the recommendation, yes.
Yeah, Scott, this wasn't in our package tonight, it was exactly what y'all saw, but it would need to be tweaked based on the committee's feedback to strike out number Douglas, thank you. And Planning Commission. Next item, personnel, discussion of proposal for 4896-hour shift rotation for Fire Department. You've got Chief put together really good information in our packet. This looks like a one-year trial program, starting 1/1/25. Chief, would you be, how heartbroken would you be if we did this next workshop?
That sounds like a wonderful idea.
All right. But it is effective 1/1/25, right?
Correct, January.
As voted on by the Fire Department, so it's great information. So we'll put that on, Douglas, if you'll make a note for next.
As a, as a point of, I don't think we even need to approve that.
We don't, it's not a city council approval, it's just a...
Information.
Yep. Yep. Desiree, we just kicked the shift change to next workshop.
Okay. Sounds good.
Chief's heartbroken, but he's going to be okay.
He'll be fine.
Yeah, he'll be all right.
You're welcome to come talk.
He would have left earlier if he didn't want to. Next item, another one we've been beating around for about two and a half years, discussion of changes to Marina Shared Parking Lot. Desiree or Douglas, who wants to tackle this?
All right. So yes, so we have been working for a few years now on trying to come up with a plan for the redevelopment of the, what we're calling the inner coastal side of the Alapams Marina. As you all know, everything's sort of south, if that's the right way to say it, of the boat ramp towards the marina, all of that is marina operations and the store. The other, the other side of the marina includes dedicated parking for the restaurant. There's a shared parking area in the middle. And then in the top-left corner is the employee lot, which is part of the shared parking area that was included as part of a separate agreement between the former marina operator and the restaurant for dedicated employee parking. And that's an agreement that the city assumed when the lease was transferred from the former operator to now coastal, coastal Marina's Alasy. We have been working on multiple iterations for, again, a redevelopment of that, of that entire side, but we seem to just encounter some roadblocks that have not allowed us to get into an agreement with the restaurant operator on, and how to better design, better accommodate that entire north area. Recently, ahead of the season, they came to us with a proposal for a temporary agreement over the summer. And we'll, we'll try, we'll pull up the, the map of, of that property so that we can walk you through. Douglas met with the marina, marina operators yesterday, and I'll ask him...
Restaurant operator.
I'm sorry, the marina restaurant operator yesterday, so I'll have him walk through what the proposed changes would be. And those changes would only be in place throughout the season. The, essentially while Douglas pulls that up, the general concept would include moving the current boat trailer parking spaces that are currently located in the middle of the shared parking lot, and moving that and essentially mimicking the boat trailer parking spaces that the marina operator has placed on the other side of the boat ramp. This drawing doesn't show that. That aerial shows the old configuration, but if you think about, let's get your creative hats on, from the, that line that separates the entrance to the marina restaurant to the boat ramp, from that line towards the end of that road before it curves to go down 41st, on that side, there's 10 trailer parking spaces at an angle. Yes. So the idea is, is people are pulling back to launch their boat, then they're driving, you know, they're, they're driving forward and then parking at an angle right, you know, on the side of the road. So we would be mimicking that same thing and shifting those middle spaces for boat trailers in the middle, and then shifting that at an, placing them at an angle. The restaurant folks have requested that for those trailer, boat trailer parking spaces right now, and how they've historically operated, they have been shared. In the morning, early in the day, when folks are leaving out with their boats, when the restaurant is not open or not fully, you know, not full, those spaces would be encumbered by boat trailers. Then as they leave, they are then shared with vehicles for the, you know, other uses at the marina or the, and the restaurants. So if you think about one trailer, parking space can accommodate two vehicular, two, two cars. So in an effort to fairly distribute the shared parking lot, they have proposed that in lieu of the, or not in lieu, but you know, that the city would get these 10 trailer parking spaces that would be dedicated to residents, they would get the same amount, the equal amount or equitable amount of car spaces dedicated to, to the restaurant in the shared lot. So that would be, not counting the 16 parking spaces we have currently, you know, it's, if you can show the L, Douglas, of the resident parking spaces, that 20 parking spaces in the remaining shared lot would be dedicated to the restaurant.
And those 20, they've asked be here?
Between the middle and around the perimeter, because I don't think that they can fit 20 there. But the idea would be to first utilize the spaces in the middle, and then essentially give them a, a total of 20 car parking spaces.
So to, while I'm here, to kind of, at its, at its basic element, it would be taking these 10 trailers and putting them right here. These would then become, 20 of these spaces would become exclusive to the restaurant. And then, so you'd have 16 here, exclusive to the city, 20 here, and, and probably a couple more here, to get the full 20, exclusive to the restaurant, and then the remaining, probably eightish, would, would be shared between the two. So these 10 go here, these 20 become the restaurant's exclusively, and then the rest gets shared.
The 10 boat trailer parking spaces that would be relocated, the intent would be for those to be exclusively for residents. If you recall, last year, the city had a temporary memorandum of understanding with the restaurant where those parking, those trailer spots were going to be utilized by the city or by, by residents with their boat and trailers, first thing in the morning, and then after 3 o'clock, as those boat trailers started leaving the marina, those would then be allowed to be encumbered by vehicles for the restaurant, patrons of the restaurant. But as I understand it, those trailer parking spaces would be solely for use of boat trailers, which, you know, one of the beauties, you know, the, part of the beauty of a shared arrangement is you maximize the use of these parking spaces when, you know, the uses shift. But I think that that is, that has been part of the ongoing challenge. The sharing component, is it a fair share? Is it 50/50? Is it 70/20? You know, we, we've struggled with that for a long time, and this would potentially solve that and provide an ongoing and permanent space, even though this would be temporary. But the idea would be for, to permanently provide trailer parking spaces for Alapams residents.
What did the Marina Store say about this?
So, so they, they have their, you know, they've redeveloped their entire parking lot. They're not, we're not, they're not involved in these conversations. They, they developed and, and designed their space, their leased space...
Right.
...to accommodate their operations.
So this is just between the city and the restaurant?
Yes, sir.
So this is for what time period are we talking about?
We haven't, we haven't yet put times associated with it, but we were talking, you know, as soon as we can get this approved through the end of the season, you know, September, October timeframe.
One other just nuance, and this is something the city, I think, would like to do permanently, but it seems the restaurant is agreeable to at least doing it temporarily. The new public dock is going to land right at this kind of angle in the bulkhead, and you can see kind of the landing spot for that is just adjacent to their parking lot. They are agreeable to taking out a couple of these spaces to be kind of the landing for that public dock in exchange for a similar amount of square footage, and the dumpster's not shown here, but the dumpster is here, and there's a city lot area adjacent where they would put a Connex box. So there would be kind of separate of this, there would be a second aspect that would be...
Can I ask you, aren't they, aren't we gaining space in that lot with the covering of the 41st Avenue outpost?
So that's...
Over here, which is not kind of at play in, in any of these arrangements.
So...
But it won't be usable for the foreseeable future?
It won't be usable for parking?
No, not for the, not for the foreseeable future. We don't, there's not, yeah, there's not...
So one of, so some of the renderings that we have been reviewing and discussing in an effort to gain access to the area that has been, that is recently being, that was recently piped, part of the, part of our desire to pipe that area was to give us greater flexibility in the different types of layouts and increase the amount of parking, and potentially have the entire city area contiguous, so that would be close to the public dock, and we can have our own city park, parking attached to the public dock. We, we, council approved a change order of half a million dollars in January with, with the goal of reaching a consensus with the restaurant operator to do that. It seems that that lot, as it is today, not counting the extra space from the area that has been recently piped, is very valuable to them. And it is clear to us that they're, they're not, they have not indicated a willingness to swap the areas and move away from that corner lot, which will limit our ability to access the area that has been recently piped for parking. So the city will have the ability, you know, you know, will have all the... So the city will have the ability, you know, will have all the parking spaces that are going to be recovered or, you know, available in the rest of the ditch. So from Waterway, don't count the area in front of the fire station, that's always been no parking and that'll remain, but from the entrance to the fire station beyond, all the way to where that road curves and heads towards the boat ramp, all of that will be able to use for parking. And we believe about 30 parking spaces could be accommodated there. But we will not have access to the rest of the ditch unless we have an agreement with the restaurant where we swap the areas.
We'll have access to it.
Not for parking.
It's our property and we will have access to it. And we may be able to, once all of the construction is gone down there and we can see things, we may be able to come up with something. But we, we lost the opportunity to make that shift because they, they got to see what it was like to have a season with that back lot. And it's, it's, it's very hard to come up with a solution, at least of the, of the engineering designs we've seen, there just, there has not been a design that is able to accommodate as much space as that employee lot provides. It's, it's.
They can maximize stacking, as I understand.
Yeah, they can.
Because of the big rectangular shape, you kind of get skinny pieces of other parts of the lot, you can't stack as much, I think, at the end of the.
I think we were.
So until.
We were one trailer spot short of coming up with an agreement that they would have, then they would have been stuck, but, but they're not.
Yeah, but how did we, how did we have that opportunity?
I mean, I'm, I'm just talking about this, the moving of this back lot is.
I know, but how did, how did we miss an opportunity?
Because we couldn't come up with an agreement, because we couldn't get enough, enough trailer spots. I mean, that's.
Mayor, I think that when we considered the change order, I think we were just more optimistic that we would be able to make it happen.
Agree. I'm just trying to get back to recreating history of how we missed an opportunity to take over that lot. I mean, that was never ours to take over.
No, but we, I mean, we had, we had some, we had some designs that were, that the restaurant at that time would have agreed to. And that's, the problem is that then they got to see, they got to live a season with that, using that employee lot.
But they.
Which, I mean, I mean, it's.
They've agreed to and not agreed to and agreed to and not agreed to. I mean, this has been going way too long and it's very frustrating, but if we're doing this for a season, let's do it, see what happens and get back to arm wrestling this fall. Because we, we did not spend half a million dollars to put a bike lane. You know, one of the nice things we could do is tie the Waterway Boulevard path, bike lane, down that piped area, keep the parking where it is now and connect it to our new park, dock, whatever. I mean, that's, that's a good use of that area as well, but to not have ingress and egress into that new piped area is a tad bit infuriating.
Keep it grassed. But not unexpected, considering that we don't control the shared, the employee parking lot. I mean, we should not have anticipated, really, if we thought about it.
Yeah, but again, we, we've got 30-plus spots that we're going to pick up as a result of the piping. We can create our green space, create a bike path, that's what we wind up wanting to do. But again, this is temporary, so you need, you need council approval at the 28th meeting.
Yes, sir. The MOU would be drafted very similar to the MOU that we had last year. So the, we would split the costs for signage and placement of posts. They would be responsible for their, for their piece, the city would be responsible for ours. I think the next item on the agenda is regarding the fees.
Yep.
Do you want me to get into that?
Keep rocking.
Okay. So there will be a number of parking spaces in that lot that would not be part of the 16 that are dedicated to residents or dedicated exclusively for the restaurant. So what we have proposed is a flat fee of $10 a day for the new parking spaces that are going to be situated along the right-of-way on 41st Avenue and those extra spaces in the, in the lot. So residents would, would always park for free in the shared lot and in the right-of-way as long as they have their decal. Same thing for the boat trailer parking spaces, that would be dedicated to residents who have a decal, there would not, there would, there would be no cost to that. But if a member of the public or a member or somebody wanting to go to the restaurant that can't fit in the 20 spaces that they have dedicated within the shared lot or in their dedicated restaurant lot, the fee would be $10. We try, we discussed it at the committee meeting, at the committee about mimicking the same fee rate that the Marina operator has in their, in their lot. They do offer an hour free. However, the, our parking vendor believes that it's, it's very, it would be challenging to manage that first hour free, people park and don't scan the barcode. So we ended up deciding, let's just have a flat fee, recognizing that most likely that area will be used as overflow by, by everybody at the Marina. So that would be the plan, that our PCI parking vendor is prepared to include this in their operation. They will be placing signs after council approves that fee. And they would just include, they're already enforcing the resident parking spaces in the shared lot, so they would be enforcing the, the paid parking spots. So that's our proposal.
Free after eight in the shared lot?
Correct. Those extra spaces that are not city or the restaurant would be free after eight.
Are we doing the, are we waiting until they finish that up? Or are we doing the, how will that? Because right now, don't we have a lot of those covered?
Yes, so right now, 14 of the 16, no, 12 of the 16 parking spaces that are dedicated to residents are covered. That was really, that was done in an effort to accommodate the employees from the restaurant. As the construction of the drainage ditch wraps up, those signs are going to be uncovered. So they're, they've already have access and really maximize the use of the employee lot. So in the next few days, we'll be removing those, those signs.
I thought part of the reason for that, too, was that we don't want people going down to the dock, like, we're kind of, right? We didn't want people to try to go to the dock when the dock's under construction, or was that?
No, because that, that area is secure, so, yeah, we'll open it up for residents, yes. During the week, it's used by our, it's used by the public dock contractor and the drain, and the drainage contractor, but on the weekends, it's, we want to make it available for residents. I think that's it.
Good to go. Next item, Charleston, discussion of Charleston County CTC program funding request for fiscal 25. This is an annual exercise that we do with the county. And in your packet was our request there going in. Desiree, you want any highlights there? I guess we'll vote on it at council meetings.
Correct. The deadline for us to submit this request is May 31st, so I, we, they require as part of the application, a commitment from the governing body that if we do get funding, that it'll be included in our maintenance program. The three projects that we've proposed is, the same project we submitted last year, just as a reminder, this same program is funding the 21st Avenue sidewalk expansion that was funded and approved. Hopefully, construction will happen at the end of this year, early next year. So we've included the same project from last year that was the second priority, which was the sidewalk extension from the Bridge and Lit Bridge through Second and a crosswalk at Second Avenue. Third, second project is the installation of pedestrian flashing lights that are solar-powered on the crosswalks along Palm Boulevard. They have a cost of about $8,000 each on each side, so 16,000 total per crosswalk. That is something that would be a new construction and would be eligible. And then the third project that we're proposing, it's associated with the drainage project, that it's going to be our next major project on Palm Boulevard between 38th and 41st. We've received funding from them for drainage projects before, so I think that this would be a great, a great project. So we can submit all three in this order of priority. We can change the priority order if, if anybody feels strongly about that, but we will be, that's our plan and we'll request approval from that. And if there's any other suggestions from council, certainly let us know.
What's the estimate for the road drainage project?
Our estimate right now is $2 million. I believe their max, what they typically fund projects is between $200 and $400,000, so it would just be an amount that would be.
Applied.
Applied to the total cost of the project.
Thank you. That's what I wanted. Thank you, Desiree. Next item, discussion of resolution for council participation in the state insurance benefits program. This is really an administrative issue more than anything, but we'll.
Yeah.
Resolution at the end of the month.
Yeah, PIBA changed the way that they define employees, so they're asking all municipalities, counties and municipalities that participate in the health insurance program for their councils to pass this resolution agreeing that you are, for our purposes, considered an employee and therefore eligible to receive the health insurance benefit. So if that's not going to change, and that's how we built the budget, and there's no conversation about not providing that to council, then we would need to get this voted on and for me to sign and submit to them.
Thank you. Next item, financial review. Deborah, financial statements in your packet and on the screen, share, share some good news with us.
I surely will. I'll try to be as brief as possible. The things that I do want to point out is we only have two more months left in this fiscal year, and so we're at 83% of our annual target. And all the revenues are showing great signs as well as we're tracking with expenses. I do want to point out that if everything stands as it is, the general fund should be in excess of $2 million over revenues. We did gain a lot in business licenses where we were a little nervous beginning of the year, but we're at 1.8 compared to a budget of 1.6. So we caught up a lot there. One thing I do want to point out in expenses, it shows that the building department is 102% of its budget, and that's because there's a $65,000 IT budgeted item that should have been posted to the muni fund and not the general fund. So that will be reclassed in May.
And Deborah's referring to the SDR monitoring system, Rentalscape, that is funded through the municipal accommodations tax, so it was funded, it was calculated to our general fund, but really should be classified. So you'll see that difference next month.
Figure Douglas shenanigans, that's just where I put it.
I gotta, I gotta watch them, yeah. Show game a little.
On, on the second page, I just want to, to point out that the interest rate, we're still getting a lot of money in interest, in interest. The interest rate is steadily declining, but it's not by much, it's slightly, slightly decreasing. And I also want to point out that our fund balance, our forecasted fund balance, we should be at 1.7 million over where we were at FY '23. So that is, the city's doing really well. For our cash.
Hey, Deborah, Scott, quick question on the business licenses. Do you know what's causing the, the uplift? Is it, does it sound like in our total number of rental licenses are down compared to the prior year, although they, maybe they just came in quicker or they've been processed quicker? Is that, is that helping this fiscal year?
I think that is helping this fiscal year as well as there's just more there, more activity. From my understanding, there just have been more applications.
Yeah.
We've just gone through the renewal.
Yes.
Rental license are still below budget roughly, Scott, but, you know, this is specific to business license, not rental license.
And they've just been renewing this past 30 days.
Yeah.
And also, remember the city increased the base fee for short-term rental licenses last year by $100. So that should be reflected once we, all of this renewal will, will be, will apply, that increase will be applied to that, to all these new licenses.
We haven't seen that yet, though.
Correct.
That's, we're not seeing that now.
Correct.
Right.
No, we are, yes, we are.
FY budget, yes.
Yes, and FY '24.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Just another.
They are, the renewals that just happened were on the new rate.
It looks like the rate cuts are not going to probably happen as quickly as we thought they might. Is that going to help us going into next year as well, you think?
I'm sorry, Scott, there was some conversation here while you started your statement. Do you mind repeating that?
Say it again.
The, it looks like the interest rate cuts that I think were either baked into next year are probably not going to happen as quickly as we thought. Is that going to, I guess that will probably help us. I don't know how that's baked into the budget coming up, and maybe that's a further discussion. But I'm guessing we're probably not going to see the rates reduced quite as fast, and I thought we had a pretty aggressive rate reduction in the budget assumption.
For insurance?
Interest.
Interest, I'm sorry.
We, we're kind of basing it on the last rolling 12. They are, like you said, they are starting to decline, so we may not see as much in interest, but, you know, we never know with this election.
Okay.
For cash balances, that you still see the fire engine and the public works and City Hall still showing up under the cash balances because the budget has not been approved yet. And so once the budget has been approved, those things will kind of.
Well, and those are future years anyways.
Yeah, those are, absolutely, they are future years. For tourist, the tourism fund, funds, there really isn't much to point out except on our hospitality taxes. They have, everything else is kind of, you know, trending as, as we have seen over the last couple of months, but tourism taxes are starting to pick up. We had a good month with March collections of $134,000 compared to FY '23.
Amy, if you'll go to hospitality tax, maybe three or four pages down.
I'm sorry, Amy, I'm just moving right along. Of $117,000, so, so that was, showed good signs that there's a lot of activity on the And all the other schedules are kind of, you know, what you've seen over the last couple of months. If you have any questions about our projects, just let me know, but this just shows, you know, the activity that has taken place, there hasn't been much cost-related items in, in the projects, but we are doing work, so we, we should start seeing some of those invoices come through.
So basically, revenues are coming in at like, at this point, 10 months into the fiscal year, $2 million over budget and expenditures of $320,000 under. Correct?
That's correct. Based on forecast.
Yeah.
So just a couple of things to keep in mind, some of the, some of the projects in FY ' '24 will have, we've already recognized that are not going to be completed in FY '24. So some portions of some projects will migrate over fiscal years, and there are some projects that we're just deferring altogether to FY '25. And on revenues, building permits will be probably the only category that we won't meet budget. I mean, we've seen a decline from the number of building permits issued.
Yeah. Next item, this discussion of grants received and in progress or process. There's a sheet in your packet, Amy, I think it was, I think you had it up on the screen.
So it was suggested that we include and talk a little bit about the grants that the city has pursued over the past couple of years and talk to some of the grants that are in process. So in the last three years, the city has received approximately $9 million worth of grants. And we're waiting on the award notice from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Program. I know I've said this, I've said before, we should know the first quarter of this year.
You're just a messenger, Desiree.
I'm just a messenger. I keep checking with them, checked last week, no, no, our project is still showing in, in review. And this is, you know, I'm talking to the local state folks, they're waiting on, you know, federal, the FEMA folks to, to make a decision, but that's still pending. The city requested, we talked about it at a few, few council meetings ago, some funds through our lobbyists for the state. We requested a million and a half for stormwater infrastructure improvements, two and a half for beach nourishment, emergency beach access project at the Alapams County Park, that's a $250,000 expense that we've included, but we've requested assistance from the state. And beach access improvements, these are for us to install boardwalks where possible for them to be ADA. It looks like we're, the general assembly is now, it's about to go into a conference committee, but it looks like of our requests, a million, a million two five for stormwater infrastructure improvements was included and left in the, left in the House budget. And in the Senate, Senator Campson was able to champion a million dollars toward. And in the Senate, Senator Campson was able to champion a million dollars towards beach nourishment. Nothing on the beach access at the Alpums County Park or beach access improvements. But luckily, this fiscal year, we did receive half a million dollars for the installation of two ADA compliant boardwalks. And then in process, as you all know, we've included the FEMA port security grant. And this is for the purchase of a new rescue boat for the fire department. The, what would be the local share of approximately three hundred thousand dollars is included in the expenditure in FY twenty-five. We're also working, we talked about the CTC projects that I've already discussed. And the police department is working on wellness app that's focused on mental health for officers and their families. And that's approximately thirty thousand dollars. We continue to actively work with our grant writer and, and identifying our opportunities based on our ten-year capital plan and try to maximize it as much as we can.
Good.
And I've done a fine job. A lot of money.
Absolutely.
Amy, if you can go to the budget slide, I know you're headed there. So let's move into the discussion of the proposed twenty-five budget. Again, we'll do, at the council meeting this month, we'll do the public hearing. We'll do the second reading in June to ratify before the July first date. Didn't want to do it without you being here, John. Or me.
Thanks.
But real quick, in your budget packet, there are two new pages that were added. I think this was the biggest packet we've ever had. Two hundred, page two hundred and fifty-two was a page on how our tourism funds are used. We've had, I've had a couple of conversations with a few of you, just, it's hard to remember and it's a lot of moving parts. But that page, two fifty-two, will show you how we use our tourism funds. About sixteen percent or four point seven million is for debt servicing, some operating expenses, capital outlay, and about ten percent mostly for personnel is about three point one million. And you'll see detailed on, on that page, two fifty-two, what, Amy, if you'll just stay on the first, first slide would be great. If you'll just, it will be, it'll show you what specific police, fire, other positions that we're paying for out of tourism funds. Page two fifty-three in your packet is showing depart, by department, who, how we're spending our tourism funds. So maybe next month, we can spend a little bit more time on those two new pages just to level set everybody on how we're using tourism funds and where they're, where they're being applied to. But I wanted to do a real quick, I mean, real quick, we're gonna bring it home fast here around kind of a ten-year view of our revenue and expenses. This first slide looks at our total revenue and our total expense. You know, we talk about having to keep buckets of revenue between tourism funds and multiple tourism funds, general fund. But if you just step back one step at least, this is just looking at total revenue against total expenses for the city. I took out the twenty eighteen beach renourishment project because it just skews the numbers. That was just a big chunk of money that we got dumped on us from FEMA and other sources. So I wanted to take out the beach renourishment projects just to kind, just to give you a trend, you know, from a revenue and expense standpoint. So you can see, you know, COVID year twenty twenty, where it got narrow because our tourism revenue and general fund revenue was obviously down. Huge recovery twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, looks like it's gonna be another pretty decent year. A narrowing as we forecast out in, in future years, but still a pretty good spread. And then you can see in twenty-eight and twenty-nine, you know, again, a spread, spread apart, a little bit better from a revenue and expense standpoint. Amy, real quick on our tourism revenue, again, I took out the beach stuff just because it skews the numbers so crazy, just having money dumped in on you. And we don't know what we're doing in twenty twenty-seven yet from a funding or timing standpoint. So the blue bar is muni ATAX, the orange bar next to it is state ATAX, the gray bar is hospitality, and the yellow bar at the right is beach restoration. So you can just see again, just like we saw in the line charts with our total revenue, twenty twenty, flat, down a little bit. And then twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, just significant upticks in our tourism money.
You took out the revenue, so I don't know what I'm looking at. You took out the beach revenue, the beach renourishment revenue out of all those years?
Correct, well, no, out of twenty eighteen where we had the FEMA
A grant.
Wildoons, that money coming, that's what I took out.
Okay, not the beach renourishment.
No, that's the yellow bar, sorry. Thank you, John.
Okay, and this is just tourism money?
It's just tourism money right here. Again, just trying to give you a trend for where we are, you know, all we're looking to approve at the end of this month, at the end of next month, is the twenty-five fiscal year budget, not future years where we're talking about, you know, putting a debt out there for different things. This is just looking at twenty-five. Go ahead, Amy. So if you look at general fund, so the first slide was total, second slide was tourism money. This is general fund revenue and expenses. And this does include the transfers from the tourism funds to cover some of our expenses. So again, look at twenty twenty where we had the COVID slowdown, if you will, and then, you know, just a good steady trend of up. Go ahead, Amy. So again, just a real, real quick recap. In twenty twenty-two, we started getting more aggressive, using tourism funds to cover some of our expenses where there was personnel or projects. This year, our fiscal twenty-five budget is looking even more aggressive where we're gonna transfer two point four million, almost a million dollar increase over our fiscal twenty-four budget. Even with all the happenings, fiscal twenty-four general fund surplus is looking a million seven, based on the numbers Deborah just ran through. Total surplus, about four and a half million for fiscal twenty-four. Right now, twenty-five, we have a general fund surplus of about a million eight forecasted with a total surplus of about three million. So again, only looking to approve fiscal twenty-five at this point, not, you know, all the other forecasts and assumptions and debt servicing that we have out there in future years. Go ahead, Amy.
Philip, quick question on that. Okay.
Sorry, Amy, back up one. Go ahead, Scott.
Oh, I just had a kind of a quick question. We're including the transfers and I, you know, I think we've had some internal debate about the general fund on its own. It doesn't cover the general fund expenses that are assigned. And I think we're, you know, it's, it's difficult and spend the habit of transferring money in from the tourism funds. I guess, you know, we've had some conversation. My concern is, is that the more we use tourism funds to cover our operating expenses, it's gonna be less that we spend the tourism funds on infrastructure projects. I think we've, we consciously added the EMS people and we've had other headcount that we need to cover with these funds. But I think what we're seeing is that the, the general fund revenue or expenses are growing, but the general fund revenues on their own are, are not growing at the same pace. And I think even the auditors pointed that out in the last, the father report. So I'm just hoping that we do address that going forward. And I think it's something that we need to spend some time. The surpluses that come out of the general fund are created because we transfer the two and a half million in. And then what we do, I think at the end, as you can see in the transfers, we put that in. That's how we fund our capital projects.
Yeah, again, I mean, it's, we're forced to keep buckets of revenue for sure. I do not disagree with that. But, you know, at some level, to me, you're looking at total revenue into this city versus expenses and how do you pay for everything? You know, state law requires us how, we have to count nickels, if you will. I, I mean, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I don't, in my opinion, I don't know that it really matters, quite honestly. I mean, you're right, at some point, does it not allow us to do another million dollar drainage project or another million dollar fire truck or something? You know, at some point, maybe. But if you, if you look, if you went back to our tourism slide, Amy, do that real quick if you don't mind, I'm sorry. That one. Bar chart, Amy, sorry, that one, thank you. You know, the numbers from twenty-four to twenty-nine on our tourism revenue, you know, just keep in mind, that's pretty conservative numbers, that we're doing a percentage of a prior year, twelve month. So again, to me, when you see that kind of growth, I feel there are a lot of things that keep me up and make my, make me lose my hair. Our budget's not one of them for me. I, I don't disagree, Scott, with, with your comment. But I just, you know, you look at our tourism revenue and what has happened in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and looks like again in twenty-four. You know, is it, is it leveling out? Maybe, you know, I know a lot of us talk to the short-term rental community and it seems to be leveling out. The average room rate seems to be coming down a little bit. Occupancy rates are coming down a little bit, so.
No disagreement on the revenue side, it's just that the expenses have grown right along.
I have one question about the
Amy, go ahead and go to the last slide, please, but go ahead.
That is with the grants that we've received, historically, they're in the budget expenses that we show, our revenues. But going forward, forecasting, we do not include any kind of anticipation of grants that we haven't applied for.
No, the only one is in the FY twenty-five budget, we do assume getting the grant from FEMA. So we've only included the expense associated with the local share.
So like twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, because we haven't applied for the grants, they're nowhere in our budgets.
Correct, we've included the entire expense of, of these projects.
Or the state allocations that we've gotten the last two years.
Correct, and then I misspoke, so it's a waterway boulevard path and the rescue boat. We're only included in the expense side, the local share of three hundred, which is entirely paid by tourism funds.
So that is one of the things that makes me comfortable going farther out with our budget is that we know that money is out there. We just need, we don't know exactly how much there is. So there will be additional funds because of the active grant applications that we keep going after.
Certainly though, and it's a state level.
And just, just a point, I know you said that we would discuss this schedule at a, at a future workshop. But I, I do think that one of the two schedules that we included that show the distribution of the operating expenses that are covered with tourism, you can see the types of positions and the number of positions in fire, police and public works that are funded by the tourism funds. And I think, you know, there is a, that's a balance that we have to, that we have to maintain. But I think it, it, they are very much justified because a lot of our operations are impacted by tourism, that they would be covered by the revenues generated through tourism tax.
So the last piece, and again, not to just paint a rosy picture, because I did take it out from the twenty twenty-seven number. You know, right now, there's a placeholder for a major beach renourishment project costing roughly twelve million, which would deplete our beach renourishment fund, preservation fund, whatever. You know, again, that's, that's ink on a page to me right now. The show management that we're getting ready to do in Wildoons, the Army Corps project, natural accretion, you know, that could push timing out, could bring timing back, could be a bigger number, could be a smaller number. Most of you know, we have the ad hoc committee that's been going on for a few months now. And one of their main tasks was to recommend a funding mechanism and strategy for ongoing island-wide renourishment. You know, our current tourism that you just saw is about a million and a half that goes into our beach preservation. Actually, it'll be a little bit more than that this year, but averaging about a million and a half. We obviously are gonna need alternative sources absent, you know, any type of storm, absent any type of FEMA money. I mean, there's no doubt we're gonna need more money to take care of, of renourishment. You know, I'm really hopeful of this show management project coming up, very hopeful of the Army Corps project coming up. That's gonna be, hopefully let us push this out a little bit, but that'll remain to be seen. Also, in our future years, we are, again, assuming that for city hall, whatever path we go, fire trucks, public works trucks. And again, those are just assumptions built into the forecast at this point for, for out years. Those will be separate decisions we'll make at the time of purchases. So again, next path is we'll have the public hearing on the meeting on May twenty-eighth. That'll be a quick fifteen minute before council meeting that Desiree went through at a high level, you know, what we're, what we're including in fiscal twenty-five. And then we'll do second reading at the end of June for it to be effective for July one.
So a couple of things that I wanted to point out, the differences between the third draft of the budget and the fourth draft, which is what we have in front of you, is the inclusion of server replacements. Y'all know, I was waiting on a number from our IT vendor on IT-related needs. We added about sixty-four thousand dollars based on their budget for hardware replacement, computers and servers. And then we, we had included eighteen thousand dollars for refurbishing crosswalks. That would allow us to do about three. We've included extra, extra money that allowed, to allow us to do all crosswalks. That is not a project that is eligible for CTC funding because that is not new construction. So we've included funds there for that. And then the final piece that I'm hoping to get some direction from council, we had some discussion at the Public Services and Facilities Committee, is the capital request for the Recreation Department, included the replacement of the playground equipment and the installation of the pour and play, sort of a foam material for, for the surface. We had some discussion at the committee last month. They recommended that we phase that project out, so do three hundred thousand this, this coming FY twenty-five budget and then do the pour and play in twenty-six for about two hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand. We've gone back and asked for more information from, from the potential vendor about the costs associated with phasing it out. You know, how, how would that look? And we found that facing, doing the equipment in one year and doing the pour and playing year two would cost us about seventy thousand dollars more. Some of the questions that came out was, from the committee, was to understand the useful life of that material. Right now, we use mulch and we replace mulch multiple times a year. We spend about ten thousand dollars every year on average. Could be more if, if we lose it during, during a flooding event. And then the pour and play has a useful life of about fifteen years. And it's about, it's gonna end up costing about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So you think about ten thousand dollars for fifteen years, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, and, you know, how does that compare to the pour and play, which can last even more if it's well maintained? So that is just something to, to think about and would like to get some feedback. Right now, it shows as a separate phased project. But if we do phase, if we do phase it, it's gonna be much harder for it to do because they can't, they would have to work manually, work around all of the equipment after it's been installed. And it'll probably cost between seventy, seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars more.
Couple of questions, if my may. Is the playground equipment now, is it what they call inclusive and accessible as far as ADA requirements go?
Carrie, if you don't mind coming here, we, we don't think so, I mean, I don't think so. The other, the other benefit of the pour and play, it is much, it is more of a ADA accessible material. And that's one of the tasks that we have been given by council a few years ago when a resolution was passed for us to think everything we do through that lens and how do we make everything go above and beyond ADA compliance? And that, that really was the impetus of proposing this material, as well as replacing some of the playground with playground equipment that could be inclusive for folks with ADA challenges.
And what is the total cost of the proposed playground equipment?
Three hundred thousand.
You mean for both years?
So no, three hundred thousand total for all of the equipment and about two hundred thousand for the pour and play.
Okay, so it's five hundred, about five hundred thousand's a project?
Yes, sir.
Correct. I'm in favor of doing it all in one year. I was, my theater company performed at North Charleston Arts Festival on May fifth at Park Circle. And went up there and they have, it's unbelievable.
It's like an amusement park.
Well, first off, the building, the community center itself, they have a beautiful theater in there. They had packed crowds all afternoon, dancer recitals, theater performances, and it went on for like five days. Everything was free, they didn't charge for anything. And behind the stage, they got men's and women's dressing rooms. And behind that, they have an assembly area to where, it's a world-class facility. And then outside, the, the playground equipment is unbelievable. I talked to TJ up there today about it and not learning a lot. That's why I was using the language inclusive and accessible. And that theirs is, is, is all inclusive and accessible. So all kids can enjoy all of the equipment. And their total price for their playground equipment was like five point seven million dollars. Five point seven million dollars. And we're looking for like ten percent of that number. The mayor has mentioned it now, as you know, me before, it's like buying all new furniture for your house and then get the furniture in there and decide, well, we need to redo the floors. So why don't we, we had the money, why don't we just do it all at one time, one, one, just one project, get it out of the way? It's extremely successful up there in North Charleston. They had over eighty thousand visitors in their first sixty days. They had eleven thousand visitors that came from more than two hundred and fifty miles away. Not that we want that, but we Not that we want that, but we want, I think, we have a world-class residential neighborhood here, we should have world-class facilities for our kids, and, and for, for all kids to be accessible and inclusive to it. Where's, a lot of, seems like to me, I've been watching the dynamics for many years, I hear 38, as a matter of fact, and we're getting more and more young families moving here now than, than I've noticed in the past few years, and I think we need to include the kids in our deliberations, and let's just push this thing through.
I, I did want to point out, Mayor, as well, if I may, some conversation in the Public Services and Facilities Committee was associated with looking at our fees and seeing how we can increase, I mean, I, I don't think we'll be able to increase, to, to be able to cover all of the Recreation Department expenses and, and the, for the operations of the Rec Department, but, and in recognition that our fees need to be looked at more constantly, and we need to keep up with, you know, just increase in cost, the department has already made some changes to some of the programming that would come into effect this year, and we have planned increases to the programming and summer camp for next year, we're already in the middle of it now. But between FY23 actual and what we're forecasting to end in '24, rec program income has increased 17%, and rec instructor program income has increased by 19%. So there is an, an ongoing effort to, to increase the fees to be able to at least offset some of the costs associated with the rec department without necessarily impacting our residents.
One final note, if you don't mind, TJ did volunteer to come here, missed any time, and give a presentation, lasted about 40 minutes, about the benefits and how successful their playground equipment program has been, and, you know, he's not selling, trying to sell us anything, he's got a job, so he's not a playground equipment salesman, but he did offer that, and he used to work here for us years ago, very nice fellow, but I, I thought it was very interesting, and I learned a lot about it.
Just a quick reminder, we've got about 130,000, I think, in a rec fund that's just accumulated over the years that we're using to offset this project as well, so. Yeah, I, I would very much be in favor to do the whole thing at one time personally, just seems to make logical sense.
Yeah. Once, once we found out how much more difficult it was to do it after the fact, it's also more time-consuming, too, so.
Carrie, do you have any comments about, if you've been up down for sure?
No, all in one would be what I would, I would vote for, you know, closing the playground once, making sure it's done in a more timely fashion, so the people who use it are only affected once versus twice, so it sounds like the project would be easier that way.
And it could be done, it could be phased, it'll be more expensive, and the contractor also said that if they do it before they, they pour the pour and play, before the equipment is placed, it would be about a day's worth of work. If you phase it out, it'll probably be two, two weeks' worth of work because of all the manual work that needs to happen.
Always takes longer to do it the wrong way.
Desiree, what do you want to do on the capital projects?
Oh.
Carrie, thank you.
Well, you tell me.
Very fast.
Very fast? Oh, gosh, this is our highlight!
I know, there's a lot of good stuff happening.
I need to move that to the front of the agenda.
Next one, you're right, I thought I did need to.
All right, just very quick, 41st Avenue, I encourage you to walk very carefully around the project area, you'll see that it's almost, it's almost complete. The, I did want to point out that the public dock project is running a little bit delayed. There was a change order that I approved to increase the pile size about a month ago, and that extended the substantial completion date from June 1st to June 16th. So we're still not that, not that far off, but they're working, working really hard, you can see them almost every day, day there. That could be pushed. T-Dock repairs is almost complete, dredging, we're still working on that, coordination with stakeholders, and, and working on pre-application meetings once we have that nailed down. On the beach maintenance, so we have a public meeting, we had some, let me back up, on Breach Inlet, we had some emergency work happen there this week, the high tides earlier this week, put some of, a couple of properties within 20 feet, so continuing our, our work once it, once it triggers that, that emergency condition, we have our contractor out there. We're also working to order, we've already ordered 100 extra bags for placement at Beachwood East to fill some gaps, some of the old sandbags were, are buried now as the profile is increasing. So our coastal engineering folks have recommended that we, that we do that. We have about $66,000 from the original budget that council approved last year of 300,000 for the sandbag op, work, left that should, that should cover the cost of the additional sandbag, so I don't, I don't have a need to come to council for, for an additional allocation. On the Wild Dunes Show Management Project, that application has been submitted, we have a public meeting scheduled for 5 o'clock on May 22nd, that'll be at the Recreation Center. Stephen will provide a, details about the project, and folks will have the opportunity to ask some questions and have some discussions about what we're proposing to do there. Then the, the Beneficial Use Project at Breach Inlet, that contract has been awarded. The pre-construction meeting, we, was held last month, the notice to proceed was not issued in April, as we had thought, it was issued May 1st. There were some delays associated with some environmental permits on the OCR, ADNA, and the Army Corps of Engineers, but finally, they did, they did issue the notice to proceed. You're coming off of the connector, you'll probably see all the equipment that's already placed, so the contractor is moving their equipment, they're, have some on site, they've requested the city to issue a, a approval, if you will, of them utilizing the Breach Inlet parking lot for the placement of a trailer and some minor equipment. We had a meeting yesterday with some folks from DOT, and they indicated that they just have to go through the encouragement permit, so we're working through that for them to be, to be placed, and they would be placed in that, on that side for the duration of the construction period, which is six months, remember? Yes, so they're starting.
That includes Sullivan's.
Yeah, they're starting, they'll work at Alapalms for two, two, maybe two and a half months, and then they'll be moving to Sullivan's Island, but they would be keeping that there throughout the, the project. The, so while the contractor has mobilized, there's a lot of work that needs to happen in the sediment areas, there's a lot of vegetation that has to be removed, so we believe between, they said four to six weeks potentially of work before we start seeing sand being pumped on the beach at Breach Inlet. You all recall earlier this year, we were notified by both OCRM and the Corps that we needed to submit a permit, a separate permit, that we, that the supplemental work that we wanted to do of moving the sand that they're placing and move it up to the dune and to the dry sand beach could be done under their existing permit, we've been told that we needed to submit a, submit a separate one. So that's, that's in the works, everything's been submitted, and Stephen is working really, really hard to expedite that through the regulatory agencies, and we think we'll be able to do that, so that'll be great news. I think that's it, Mayor. A lot going on, please make sure you read the entire, the entire capital projects update, but, a, a lot of good stuff.
Yep, thank you. Real quick, a reminder, our next city council workshop will be June 18th, because primary elections are on the 11th. I think you should already have a calendar invite, that'll be the 18th at 11, be in no further business.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor. All for it.